Okay. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. First of all, we have prelude music, Chelsea Snow. Thank you so much for joining us. You know, Chelsea, I don't know if you remember me, but we gave TED Talks together last year, and you were one of the performers. Just absolutely outstanding. I'm sure I heard everybody -- oh, there's Jim. I heard everybody clapping, and I remember you from last year. Absolutely remarkable job. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Our invocation tonight is being provided by Chris McPike, and flag salute by Mr. Mike Nigar. If we could bring you up to the podium, sir.
It was honored to be here tonight with the mayor and the city council. Pastor Gary, who's been here many times, retired, and so I just took over the church this week. He sends his best wishes and regards to all of you, but thank you for allowing me to be here tonight with all of you. Let's pray. Lord, I just thank you for the opportunity to be here with just all the leaders of this community. Lord, what an important job they have as they serve this community. And so, Lord, I pray tonight that you would guide them, that you would lead them, that you'd give them wisdom. Lord, as this city continues to grow, that they would make all the right decisions, Lord, that you'd give them the very ideas that would come to their mind. And so, Lord, I also place this meeting that you'd have your way here, that everything that needs to be accomplished would take place. We thank you, Lord, for all you've done for us, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you very much.
If you turn, face a flag with me and say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comatero?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Hello.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
I am here. All right. Number one on our list, presentation of certificate of achievement to Seth William McLoughlin of Troop Number 301 for attaining the Eagle Scout rank. Proud father, congratulations. Mayor Pro Tem Nigar is going to bring the proclamation down, but we're hoping that you can come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about the project that helped you become an Eagle Scout.
Hi, I'm Seth, and my project was with a nonprofit called Canine Guardians, and they raise German shepherds to be companions and service animals for veterans. They're up in Fallbrook, and so for my project, I built some training structures for the dogs to help them practice jumping and learning how to climb up stairs and ladders. So that was -- the building was in July and August, and after all the paperwork, I got the rank of Eagle on December 6th. So I'm very grateful for everyone that came out to help me, and thank you for honoring me here tonight. Absolutely.
Well, Seth, it looks like Troop 301 does it again. It seems like, you know, every month or so, we're getting a member from Troop 301 becoming an Eagle Scout, so they're certainly doing something good there. We have a proclamation for you. It says, "City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. The City Council of the City of Temecula commends the outstanding achievement of Seth William McLoughlin of Troop Number 301. We congratulate Seth for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of Seth's accomplishment and wish him continued success in his promising and bright future." It's signed not only by our own city clerk, but also by our mayor, Dr. Myatt Ron. And we also have something else that's special for you. Started some, geez, almost 10, 15 years back, by then-mayor Mary Ann Edwards, we have a special pin. This is a minted pin for Eagle Scouts only that was minted by the City of Temecula for special occasions just like this. And so, they're not given out unless you make a Eagle Scout rank. Maybe there's 100 in circulation, 50, not a whole bunch. So this is precious to us because what you've accomplished is also precious to us. So congratulations, young man. I wish you well.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Congratulations. Let's see, what else do we have on the agenda? Received presentation, Eastern Municipal Water District on the California Water Fix Project. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. This doesn't look like my presentation, so...
Just wing it.
It is coming. Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to address the council, Mayor Ron, members of the council. I want to talk to you a little bit today about the California Water Fix and some recent actions that have been taken by the Metropolitan Water District Board to really help protect this critical piece of infrastructure known as the State Water Project. I've been before the council before. I've talked to you frequently about the California Water Fix. About 30% of the water that's been used in Southern California, and actually in our service area here in Eastern Municipal Water District, flows from the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta through the State Water Project. The water is exported from the State Water Project at a point of diversion that's actually in the southern end of the delta. The San Francisco Bay Delta estuary is a confluence of two major rivers, the Sacramento River on the north, which carries about 2/3 of the flow, the San Joaquin River on the south. It goes through a series of canals and sloughs, and then on the very southern end of the delta, there is a point of diversion in which the State Water Project and the Central Valley Project extract water from the delta and bring it to Southern California. The location where the water is currently extracted from the delta causes, along with other stressors in the delta, a change in the flow patterns with -- have impacted the endangered fish species over the years, and has resulted as part of the Endangered Species Act in a reduction of diversions from the delta and a loss of water supply to Southern California. So the California Water Fix Project is currently proposed. Will have two tunnels that go from the existing point of diversion up to the Sacramento River, where the higher flow occurs into the delta. That's about 30 miles north, and the project contemplates construction of two tunnels that are 28 feet in diameter from the current point of the southern portion of the delta up to the Sacramento River. The benefit of this is that if there is a natural disaster in the delta, and the 50- to 80-year-old levee system that brings water to the southern portion of the delta should fail, that we have a guaranteed source of water from the Sacramento River coming into Southern California, and it can be safely conveyed through those tunnels. The other benefit of that is an environmental benefit. If you think about it with the endangered species in the delta, when you have high flows of water, and when you can extract those flows without any impact on the endangered species, that would be the most beneficial operation. With the two tunnels, you'll be able to take a substantial amount of additional water out during the shorter windows of high-flow periods and export that water to Southern California in a manner that doesn't impact the endangered species. And in addition, it'll also improve the habitat for the fish and allow more water to be stored in Southern California. So let me -- since I've jumped through about 3/4 of my presentation here, there you go. So this shows the current proposal for the California Water Fix. As I mentioned, you can see on the southern portion of the map where the State Water Project extracts water. You can see the pink lines show the alignment of the two tunnels, and then the extraction point on the Sacramento River. So the idea of that, as I mentioned, is to be able to take flows during those high-flow periods in a less environmentally damaging manner. The cost for that project is $17 billion, and last fall, the Metropolitan Water District Board of Directors voted to support a 26% share of that project, of the $17 billion, for an investment of $4.3 billion in the project. Following that vote last fall, some of the other partners in the project, particularly the Central Valley agricultural agencies, were not able to commit to their portion of the project costs. They have different economics than we do in the urban areas. Those large agricultural agencies needed to sell water to be able to recoup and pay off the bonds, and therefore, because the construction period's going to be 15 years, were not able to finance that upfront. So consideration was given to build just one tunnel, and Metropolitan and the state were considering that. They called it a staged alternative, but in fact, when they looked at risks associated with the environmental documentation, which is pretty much substantially done for the two-tunnel project, permitting concerns, increased costs from the staging, there was concerns, and those concerns were expressed by Governor Brown, that the project might not move forward. So on April 10th, the Metropolitan Board approved additional funding to basically finance the full two-tunnel alternative. So their cost for that increased to $10.8 billion. Met really had kind of a difficult choice, because the choice was to be between supporting a one-tunnel staged project that had higher implementation risk, or financing the full 9,000 CFS two-tunnel project with the expectation of recouping the investment from those Central Valley agricultural agencies when they could flow water through the facilities. Under state law, if you build a facility and another agency uses that facility, you're entitled to recover the full costs for the operations and capital associated with constructing that facility. Those are called wheeling costs, and you're able to recover those under state law. The Central Valley farmers will be needing that capacity in the future, and so Metropolitan will be able to wheel water to those farmers and recover some of those costs. But as the primary investor in the project, Metropolitan is in much better position to ensure the project's going to go forward and actually be constructed. So if you look at the portion of Metropolitan's costs, and you break it down to the cost per household, it's about $4.80 per month, per household, when the project's fully built out. I do want to point out that those costs will vary based on how much met water you purchase. So for example, we purchased about a 50-50 blend. 50% met water, 50% is local water, groundwater, recycled water, and our other local water resources. So when we look at that, it may vary slightly from that $4.80 per household per month. And those costs are also going to be incurred gradually over the 15-year construction. They won't be issuing bonds for a couple of years probably, and that's the first increase we'll see, but that's going to come in gradually over the 15 years. And as I pointed out earlier, the idea is that that is a maximum cost, and those costs, if the agricultural agencies wheel water through the system in the future, will go down substantially associated with that offsetting of those costs. So if we can go to the last slide. So the next steps are threefold. First, the project, as I mentioned earlier, has all the environmental clearances from the state and federal agencies. It's awaiting a decision from the State Water Resources Control Board on a final diversion permit. MET is finalizing the arrangements with the other state water project contractors who have committed to the project. They're forming a joint powers authority, or a multiple joint powers authority, to implement the design, construction, and financing of the project. And it appears that pending the resolution of potential litigation on the environmental documents, that construction activities could start as early as 2019, and as I mentioned, the construction is about a 15-year period. Also included, I believe, at the dais, or if not in your package, is a letter that was prepared by Randy Reckert, the chairman of the board of Metropolitan, who represents Eastern Municipal Water District, kind of going over those recent events that I just mentioned, and talking about the decisions relating to the California Water Fix and where we go from here. So with that, if there are any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to do so.
I got one. Go ahead.
We'll have Mr. Comatero first.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Paul.
Sure.
In layman's terms, at the completion of the project, or maybe it steps along the way, what's going to be the real benefit to we as ratepayers and our constituents in terms of supply and cost of the water itself, not necessarily the project?
Sure. The benefits, first, on the supply side, are going to be a much greater level of reliability. And let me give you an example. When water comes from the State Water Project, they do -- the state determines, based on the conditions in the delta, how much can be released every year. They do it as a percentage of your entitlement. This year, Metropolitan's entitlement is going to be around 30% because of the dry conditions. Last year, it was higher. When we were during the drought, in the peak of the drought, it was as low as 10%. And so, we're not getting the water out of that investment. And so, what we anticipate seeing with the twin tunnels is a much more level and steady reliability from the delta, so year in and year out, we're going to get those reliable supplies. The second issue is, as I mentioned, the levee system that the water currently moves down to the intake from the State Water Project is between 50 and 80 years old. The levees were not constructed to Corps of Engineers standards. There's been numerous studies that shown they are subject to a high degree of seismic risk. If there was a major seismic event through the delta, and there was failure of those levees, what happens is the saltwater from the San Francisco Bay Delta estuary -- or bay, is actually rushes into the delta and would disable our ability to export water from the delta between one and three years. So it could have a catastrophic effect on our economy, considering a third of the water we use in Southern California is through the delta. So I think we're going to see greater supply reliability in a year-in and year-out basis, and also substantial protection from catastrophic events.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Mr. Stewart.
That's what I was going to ask about the net gain, as far as what water supply we're going to get, but you pretty much answered that. What about the quality of the water? Will that actually be better because it's not going through that delta area?
Yes, it will. One of the issues we struggle with, both Eastern Municipal Water District and Rancho California Water District, is salinity balance. If you think about it, we're importing water into our area. With each acre foot of that water, for example, an acre foot of water from the Colorado River, which is much more saline than the water from the delta, it's about 1,300 pounds of salt comes in with each acre foot. About half of that in the water that comes from the delta, you know, maybe 500 to 600 pounds of salt. Essentially, what will occur is the -- because the Sacramento River has higher flows and lower salinity, we'll see the salinity in the water coming from the delta reduced in half. And so, what's the benefit of that? Twofold. First, as we apply water locally, the more salt we have in it, it leaches into the groundwater basin and causes the salinity of our groundwater to increase. So to the extent we have lower salinity groundwater, or lower salinity surface water from the delta, that's not going to impact our groundwater basins. Second, as a source water, it goes through our system, and we recycle that water, as you know. We have a very aggressive water recycling program. It's really drought-proof to Southern California in many ways. And to the extent we have salinity levels that creep up in the source water, it makes that recycled water, which is a lot of its use for irrigation and agriculture in our service area, not usable because the salt levels are too high. So we really get great benefits in terms of salinity management.
All right. Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Paul. We've all seen projects in our lifetimes of maybe not this magnitude, but large government projects that have gone horrendously over budget and taken much, much longer to construct. Are there going to be safeguards built into any of the contracts or the scheduling that will prevent that?
Yeah, I think that one thing Metropolitan Water District has, I think, a very good record on is building projects on time and on budget. If you look at Diamond Valley Lake, that project was a grand-size project, the biggest reservoir in Southern California, and it was built on time and on budget. They have done an excellent job of researching and working to look at all the major tunneling projects that have been done in the world in the last 10 years. They're looking at the most contemporary construction techniques. They're having the design peer-reviewed by experts in the area of tunneling who've constructed projects in other areas. And so, I think there's a number of safeguards they're putting in place to make sure they're doing that. But I think to Metropolitan's -- to Metropolitan, I think if any agency is geared to construct a large water project, Metropolitan, who constructed the Colorado River Aqueduct on budget, who constructed Diamond Valley Lake, is in a good position to take on a project of this size and magnitude. And I think one of the important things is, it's not the state of California constructing this. It's a joint powers authority of water agencies that have a vested interest, whose ratepayers are going to be paying for that project, so I think we'll see a different level of accountability.
Thanks.
All right. Mr. Nigar.
Yes, real quick, always welcome, Paul. Good to see you here in our chambers. Just wanted to say hi to Director Kubler. We don't often see him here. Greetings and welcome as well.
Thank you. I was going to introduce him, but thank you for doing that.
He needs no introduction.
He needs no introduction.
That's true. Been around long enough.
Any other questions? I think we're good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do.
All right. Total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out with the city clerk. Prior to city council addressing that item, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Can we have the first speaker, please?
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Gary Yeomans, to be followed by Carolina Selaya.
Mr. Yeomans, good evening.
Gary Yeomans, City of Temecula, or whatever, you know me. I'm here to represent SAFE. Yeah, it is. Oops. If you don't know, is a nonprofit. SAFE stands for Safe Alternatives for Everyone, and takes care of anybody that's affected by domestic violence, organizations based here in Temecula. We have our annual fundraiser coming up on June 2nd at the Hawk Ranch in Marietta. And it's our Sweet 16, but Denim and Diamonds, if you've ever been to it, is a nice event. It's very casual. Jeans, cowboy shirts, diamonds are acceptable for the women, whatever you feel like is comfortable. Our guest speaker will be Mike Heston, the district attorney, so we have a good turnout, always good prizes, good raffles, good opportunity, get a lot of fun. So I'd like to invite the entire community to come be a part of it. And I'm up here. I also want to invite everybody to come to Ally's Place. Ally's Place is named after Allison Jones, who was enforced -- Jacobson, who was a victim of domestic violence back in 1993. If you remember, in the same situation, that same day, the police responded, and Officer Ken Hindergaard was also killed. One of our board members is Allison's mom. We open this resale store, and it's located right here on Temecula on Jefferson. Good opportunities, good items in the store for of all sizes, furniture, clothes, books, toys, everything. So thank you for letting me tell you about SAFE.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Can we have the next speaker, please?
The next speaker is Carolina Selaya, to be followed by David Cooley.
Good evening.
Hello, council. My name is Carolina Selaya. I live in the Rancho del Sol community, which is the community that's right across from Temecula -- I hate seeing my picture out there. But Temecula Elementary School and the Sage Apartments and Margarita Park. So this community, I've lived there for about eight years, and most recently, we've had crazy crime. The crime is just out of control. Like, every week, we hear about car theft incidents. There's people coming into the neighborhood, just walking in and stealing, breaking into the cars, taking our personal valuables. Something just happened last night, and it's -- we don't know what to do at this point. That's why I'm here. Most recently, about a month ago, we had a car stolen in the neighborhood as well. Most of this stuff doesn't get reported because it's petty, you know, a pair of sunglasses got stolen, stereo, whatever, you know? But the car got stolen, and we've had a lot of different issues besides that. There's been graffiti and tagging. That happened recently as well. Stolen mail from mailboxes happens all the time. We have porch pirates. People are just stealing packages from our front yard, or the porch. And then, of course, theft from the front yard bikes, et cetera, things like that, plants even. I mean, it's really pathetic, but we want to just take action. We don't know what to do at this point. You know, some of the things have been reported to the police, but we are asking to the residents of Rancho del Sol to have cops patrol the area between the hours of midnight to 5:00 a.m. That's when most of the things happen. Unfortunately, no one's up when these things happen, but we do have surveillance. Some of the residents have put up cameras, and the cameras unfortunately don't work very well at night, so it's hard to see who's stealing and who's doing the vandalism. So we've requested, we're trying to request to do that from 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. You know, we have footage that these things happen at night. We see lights. With the car situation, there is actually people being dropped off, and you can see the car dropping off people. It's hard to say who it is, but they're also taking the car, and then this other car's following them with their lights out. It's just, it's crazy. So, you know, we understand that Measure S passed a couple of years ago, and that was supposed to provide funding for law enforcement and create equality of life, you know, for the city of Temecula. And it's supposed to maintain low crime rates and safe neighborhoods as a top priority to keep Temecula as a, you know, safe city in the U.S. as one of the top ones. But unfortunately, the community of Rancho del Sol hasn't experienced that. We've had the opposite effect, where we've gotten more crime. And we just don't know what to do. It's the residents, they're good people that live there, but it's the people that are walking into the neighborhood. So we're asking the council to give us suggestions. We have a Facebook page that we communicate about suspicious characters.
So you're out of time, but I want to continue this conversation. I know our police chief there is taking notes, and, you know, we definitely have enhanced patrols and response in areas where we do hear residents, you know, complaining about crime. Just a couple of quick things. One is, you know, new to the city, we have, I know a lot of folks, and we see this and we struggle with this on the law enforcement side, is that a lot of folks will post things on Facebook but not call, you know, law enforcement and report something. And it's, a lot of times, you're right. It's, you know, the sunglasses were taken off my dashboard or something, you know, that's somewhat inconsequential, and that unfortunately allows criminals to, you know, sort of ramp up activities when they see that the neighborhood is a little bit more passive on their diligence on the residents' end. Not to say that, you know, we don't take every crime seriously, and so we encourage everybody, doesn't matter what it is, report. We have a non-emergency number that's available to call. In fact, we have a new app that if folks just want to download something on their phone, download the app and report things, suspicious vehicles. You know, the more information our police department has, the easier it is for them to be able to deal with criminal activity. And so, want to make sure that you get your contact information to our police chief, and make sure that we get a report back probably at our next meeting about what has been going on in the neighborhood and what the police department is doing to help alleviate those issues. I really appreciate you coming out this evening.
Yes, thank you so much. We just don't know what else to do with the next step, so if you have guidance, I will definitely share that app with the Facebook page.
Yeah. First step is, let's make sure we get you connected with our chief, Mr. Comatero.
Yeah, just...
Yeah, just to expand on what the mayor said, I assume we're the same as any other community, that the way resources are committed is based on the quantity of reports in any given area. And so, if those occurrences are taking place and they're not reported, you're not going to get the same level of resources as other areas might get who are reporting. So it's really critical.
Good to know.
To report.
And I have one more thing, too. We found that neighborhood, an active neighborhood watch, it was really effective in Wolf Creek. And so, if you don't have a neighborhood watch, we should look into getting one going in your neighborhood, too, because it really does help.
Yes, good idea. Well, thank you so much for your help, and I will be in touch with the chief.
All right, thank you. Make sure you leave your information with her before you go. All right, can we have the next speaker, please?
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker is David Cooley.
Mr. Cooley, good evening. Welcome.
I come before you today because I wanted to, I'm very concerned about a situation that's happening in our state. The primary function of government, as you know, is to protect its people. The politically correct culture that's developed is destroying our land, I believe, and politically correctness causes people to fear to take a stand because someone might be offended. I'm asking you today to take a stand, just as Orange County, San Diego County, and I believe fifteen other cities have done, to oppose SB 54, the sanctuary state law that limits local law enforcement collaboration with immigration agents in regards to criminal illegal aliens. I hope you will seriously consider this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any other speakers this evening? None. All right, city council reports. Do not see anyone in the queue. Mr. Comatero.
Just a minute, Gary. You mentioned the tragic incident years ago involving our police officer Kent Hindergard. It's almost amazing to consider for those of us who were around at the time, but twentieth anniversary of his death is coming up, and it's going to be a commemorative service at French Valley Justice Center on May the 8th. I think it's at 10:30, it's open to the public, so may not be everybody's cup of tea, but it was a rather historic event in our city, certainly a tragic event, so it's worthwhile to go out and celebrate. Maybe that's the wrong word, commemorate is better.
10:30, it is 10:30.
10:30, thank you.
All right, anyone else? No? Okay, well, I just have one quick one, and Mr. Caton, it's unusual not to hear from you talking about the Taste of Temecula, but I know you know we were going to show a quick video on some of the items, and in particular, the Good News of the Week, which addresses some of that, so I think we have a video available for that.
Hi, this is Christine with the city of Temecula, standing in front of Devolicious Eatery and Tap Room here in Old Town Temecula, and this is your Good News of the Week for April 23rd, 2018. So, congratulations to Vindovino, an ag technology startup company. It's actually located in the city's business incubator, the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs' Exchange. They are the first recipient of the city's Innovator of the Year award. Congratulations, Vindovino. So, speaking of innovation, the city of Temecula is getting ready to host our first annual Startup Week. It's September 24th through the 28th. The event is hosted by local entrepreneurs and innovators in creative spaces all over town. If you want to help us with this effort, we would love for you to come and join us with the team. Check out our website for more information. All right, so let's talk about traffic. Down on the south end of town, the Temecula Parkway Interchange Project is on schedule. They just finished the construction of all the retaining walls, and now they are working on constructing the bridge support. So get ready for some congestion relief towards the end of this year. So do you have a love affair with food, wine, beer? Then you have to check out Taste of Temecula Valley. It's this Friday and Saturday, April 27th and 28th. Saturday will be a family-friendly day from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., with menu selections from the best Southern California restaurants, wineries, craft breweries, and specialty shops. The younger kids can have fun in a specially-designed fun zone. All proceeds from this event benefit the students of the Temecula Valley Unified School District. So one of the featured vendors at Taste of Temecula Valley is Devolicious. And right here in front of me is their lobster sandwich, which they will also be featuring there, but in lighter form. So, bon appetit, and see you next week.
All right, anything to add, Mr. Caton? All right, wonderful. All right, look forward to seeing you out there. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item two, approve action minutes of April 10, 2018. Three, approve list of demands. Four, approve city treasurer's report as of February 28, 2018. Five, approve the Third Amendment to the agreement with Temecula Valley Unified School District for the joint use of a portion of Temecula Elementary School. And six, approve a list of projects to be funded by Senate Bill 1, or SB 1, for fiscal year 2018-19. Can I have a motion and a second?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, and that passes 5-0. And recessed the council meeting to the Temecula Community Services meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. To call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here tonight. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, we'll dispense with that. We'll go to the few items on the consent calendar. Item seven, approve the action minutes of April 10, 2012. Item eight, approve annual and multi-year agreements with services, for services, with various community services, department, events, classes, programs, and activities.
Move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion does carry unanimously. Mr. Hawkins, you've got 10 seconds, right? What do you got for us?
I actually have nothing. Commissioner Schwenk will be reporting on a couple of items later, so thank you.
Commissioner, you want to wait till later, or do it now?
Let's wait till later.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Adams, anything?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have any board member reports, comments? Nothing? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of May the 8th.
So moved.
Take it.
Been made and seconded. Any opposition? This meeting is adjourned.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and open the public hearing for receiving public comments. Item number nine this evening is to approve fiscal year 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG Annual Action Plan, and substantial amendment to the 2017-18 Annual Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Ron, and members of the council. Tonight, I am here to present the 2018-19 CDBG Annual Action Plan, as well as a substantial amendment to the 2017-18 Annual Action Plan. For context, first, let me provide a little bit of background and history of the CDBG program here in Temecula. CDBG is a federal program that strives to create the development of viable urban communities by promoting, preserving, and assisting in the development of affordable housing, improving and expanding infrastructure and facilities, and providing and improving access to public services. CDBG activities must meet one of three national objectives listed on the screen, and activities in Temecula typically satisfy the first objective, which is benefiting low and moderate income persons. In 2012, city council adopted its first consolidated plan to become an entitlement community, which authorized Temecula to receive CDBG funds directly from the federal government. Our CDBG program is guided by two main documents, the Consolidated Plan and the Annual Action Plan. Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan that is used as a general framework for the city to assess its housing and community development needs and identify its priority projects for its funding allocation. It also includes a market analysis, needs assessment, and strategic plan. The newly-created Assessment of Fair Housing sets locally-determined fair housing priorities and goals. As I mentioned, the Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan that demonstrates how the city will meet certain community and housing needs as identified through an extensive public outreach process. Each project or program that is funded through CDBG funds must meet at least one of the consolidated plan goals or priorities approved by city council last year. The Consolidated Plan has identified 11 priorities. The priorities are intended to be broad in order to remain flexible over the life of the Consolidated Plan, as the needs of the city may change over time. Each funded program must meet at least one of these priorities. Promote the development of affordable housing, preserve the existing affordable housing stock, ensure equal access to housing opportunities, provide services for low and moderate income residents, provide services for residents with special needs, provide public services for the homeless and those at risk of homelessness, provide public services for seniors and veterans, improve neighborhoods, public facilities and infrastructure, promote economic opportunity, amend land use and zoning code to promote housing, and improve access for individuals with disabilities. So as I mentioned, these are meant to be very broad and encompassing. I think we covered everything here, so that the city can remain flexible over the next five years. During the last Consolidated Plan cycle, we learned that being too specific actually limited our options. So now that we've familiarized ourselves with the broader priorities of the CDBG program, let's hone in our focus on the upcoming 18-19 program year. While the Consolidated Plan provides the overarching framework for our CDBG goals and activities, each subsequent action plan defines specific projects for each program year, and how the city intends to utilize the allotted federal funds to address national objectives and priority needs identified in the Consolidated Plan. HUD requires an extensive community outreach process prior to the adoption of the Annual Action Plan each year. During our application period in November, staff held two technical workshops, both on November 30th, to assist applicants on the application process. Staff met with the Finance Committee, consisting of council members Edwards and Stewart, on March 6th for funding recommendations, which are reflected in the Annual Action Plan and in this report. We also had a 30-day public review period, and tonight, we have a public hearing with the entire city council. The city is anticipated to receive roughly the same allocation of CDBG funds as this current fiscal year, so approximately $515,000. The allocation is broken up into three areas. The city may spend 20% of the allocation, so approximately $103,000, on administrative costs. This includes some of staff time and consultant time. A maximum of 15% or approximately $77,000 may be spent on nonprofit public services, and the remainder, or approximately $334,000, may be spent on capital improvement projects. The city received 11 public service funding requests totaling about $180,000. The city also received one request from Habitat for Humanity for housing activities that may utilize capital funds, and I will discuss it later in the presentation. As I previously mentioned, a maximum of approximately $77,000 may be allocated for public services. The CDBG funds are spent entirely on low and moderate income residents here in Temecula. The Finance Committee recommended that the following 10 public service providers receive CDBG funding for 2018-19. We have Chemo Buddies for Life, $2,000 for their program of the same name. Hospice of the Valleys, $5260 for their senior assistance program. Safe Alternatives for Everyone, or SAFE, $5260 for their Temecula Safe and Healthy Families program. Voices for Children, $5260 for their court-appointed special advocate, or CASA program. Canine Support Teams, $5260 for service dogs for the disabled program. City of Temecula, $16,020 for the new homeless prevention and diversion program that will be run through community services. The Boys and Girls Club of Southwest County, $7,500 for their before-and-after-school-care-for-kids program. Assistance League of Temecula Valley, $7,500 for Operation School Bill. Fair Housing Council of Riverside County, $17,968 for the comprehensive fair housing program, and VNW Circle of Care, $5260 for the Circle of Care Food Ministry. The remainder of our CDBG allocation, which is approximately $334,000, can be used towards capital improvement projects. As I mentioned, the city received one application for housing activities for $30,000 through Habitat for Humanity. Because of the demonstrated need for these services in the community to keep homes affordable, the Finance Committee recommended funding Habitat for Humanity with $30,000 from the capital improvement allocation. The Finance Committee also recommended that the remainder of the allocation be used for funding high-priority projects that are identified in our Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA Transition Plan. The second item for the council to consider this evening is a substantial amendment for the 2017-18 Annual Action Plan. So first, let me answer the question, what exactly is a substantial amendment to a CDBG Annual Action Plan? According to the CDBG Citizen Participation Plan, a substantial amendment is required when a substantial change is proposed to an action plan, which includes one of the following: increasing the budget of an activity by $50,000 or more, increasing the budget of an activity by 25% or more of the original budget. There is a significant change in the purpose, scope, or beneficiaries of an activity, or the city proposes to add or delete an activity. A substantial amendment to the 17-18 Action Plan is necessary because Community Mission of Hope recently withdrew their application for 2017-18 funding for the Housing Resource Center. The funds from the Housing Resource Center, which is $10,688, are proposed to be reprogrammed for the creation of a computer lab program at the city-owned Escalier House, also known as the Pantry, on Pujol Street. This computer lab, which will be managed by city staff, would serve individuals experiencing homelessness and would reduce the barriers they face to exiting the streets by offering job search and resume building classes, housing navigation assistance and skill building, service connections, case management enhancement, and life skills classes. Initially, potential users of this computer lab would be identified in coordination with the County of Riverside, Department of Social Services, TVUSD, and the Temecula Police Department. The computer lab would only be opened during the identified program errors and would be managed by TCSD staff. This proposed program meets the con-plan goal of providing public services for the homeless and those at risk of homelessness. With that, staff recommends that city council adopt two resolutions this evening. One, to approve the 2018-19 Annual Action Plan as an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under the federal Community Development Block Grant. And second, approve the substantial amendment to the 2017-18 CDBG Annual Action Plan. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Mr. Stewart.
So, just to be clear, so these funds are actually federal funds?
Correct.
They're not actually city funds we're using to do this?
Correct. We are a direct recipient of federal funding.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. All right, any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support or opposition of the approval of projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do. Mr. Mayor, we have three speakers under this public hearing. The first is Jennifer Richard, to be followed by Dorka Shakman.
All right. Ms. Richard, good evening.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jennifer Richard, and I represent Voices for Children. And on behalf of Voices, we're so grateful to be recipients of CDBG funding for this current fiscal year, and we respectfully ask that you follow the staff recommendations for CDBG funding in this coming fiscal year. For those of you who I haven't met, Voices for Children recruits and trains volunteers to serve as court-appointed special advocates, or CASAs, throughout Riverside County. And while boys and girls in foster care have social workers and other professionals working on their behalf, those professionals have large caseloads. CASAs are unique in that they focus on one child or sibling group. In fact, Voices for Children is the only program in Riverside County authorized by the court to provide CASAs for children in foster care. So if a child is going to have a chance to have a CASA, that volunteer will come through Voices for Children. So far this year, we've served 10 children in Temecula, and there are six more on the waiting list. And the CDBG funding recommendation for the coming fiscal year will allow us to serve nearly half of the children on our waiting list. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can we have the next speaker?
The next speaker is Dorka Shakman, to be followed by Sally Wing. The next speaker is Dorka Shakman, to be followed by Sally Wing.
Ping.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Dorka Shakman, and I am representing Assistance League of Temecula Valley. Assistance League is an all-volunteer organization, and our chapter was founded in 1989, and since that time has provided new school clothing to more than 34,000 K-12 students living in poverty in the school districts of Temecula, Marietta, Lake Elsinore, Menifee, and Romaland. We're asking funding for Operation School Bell, our main philanthropic program. The 2017-18 activities for this program were completed through online process which provided... I'm sorry. I missed my place. The 2017-18 activities for this program were completed in February, and a total of 2,213 students were provided with new school clothing. 524 of those students attended school in the Temecula Valley School District. This year, the enrollment process was greatly improved through the collaboration with the Temecula Valley School District. Enrollment for the program was completed through an online process which proved to be more efficient and to reach a deeper demographic level of students that had not previously been served by the program. Each year, these children return to school without adequate shoes and clothing. Some are ridiculed and bullied because of their appearance. Others suffer silently as their self-esteem plummets, along with their academic success. Operation School Bell seeks to directly meet this basic need through the provision of new school clothing. Qualified students attend shopping events that are held at the local Kohl's Department Store. These students have the opportunity to shop in the same environment as their peers, and are allowed to choose the school-appropriate clothing that they need and want. Each student is allotted an amount of $125. They learn to work within this budget, and to make clothing choices consistent with school guidelines. Parents and educators report that having appropriate school clothing is a boost to the child's self-esteem, and helps to build the confidence that is important as students move into middle and high school grades. Most importantly, having proper school clothing strengthens the likelihood that these students will continue to attend school, to receive the education that is so greatly needed to prepare them to live productive lives. Although this program strives to provide clothing to as many local disadvantaged students as possible, our ability to expand the number of students that we serve is limited only by the needed funding. And we would like to thank the City of Temecula for all of your support in the past years since 1989. We've been here, and we thank you for considering to fund this program again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have our next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the last speaker under this public hearing is Sally Wing.
Good evening, Ms. Wing.
He looks like a stuffed animal. He's so cute.
Come here. Would you like to address the council with me? Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, this is Honey. And Honey is just one representative from the Canine Support Teams of the many dogs that we train and place with disabled individuals in our community. As I was listening to Lynn describe the overall objectives, the 11, we hit four of the 11 objectives by providing assistance to disabled, to veterans, to seniors, and individuals with special needs. We do truly embrace the goals of the CDBG program, and we strive to be good stewards of the resources that are entrusted to us. Not just the money, but the furry resources as well.
So cute.
I want to thank the council and the City of Temecula for once again allowing us to be considered for a sub-recipient of this program, and allow us to continue to do the good work that we do. We've been almost 30 years now. A woman in a wheelchair has made it her goal and her mission to serve others. She has made tremendous personal sacrifice and is truly a role model to everyone that works for this organization. I know some of you know Carol Rokmore. You've had the opportunity to meet and get acquainted with her. She continues to be the light and the spirit that drives us forward every day. And, you know, when you're vertical and in your right mind, you just have a whole lot to be thankful for. And we are truly thankful to be considered among the recipients for this program. I urge and I request respectfully the council to approve the budget as it's presented. Thank you.
Do we get to keep Honey?
She's gonna come with me just about... Well, I don't leave home without her. The document that I have placed up on the screen is our website. Anyone that would like to go and make application... I have a good news, bad news situation. The good news is, our funding has allowed our prison pups program, which is where most of our dogs receive their advanced training in task work preparation, has nearly doubled in size. That means that we're able to produce twice as many dogs as we have in the past. We currently have 58 dogs in advanced training in three California prisons. The bad news is, that means we've exhausted our waiting list. There's no waiting on Check Stand 3. If you would like a service dog, if you need a service dog, I encourage you, go to our website. If you don't need one, but you know and love someone that might benefit from a service dog, please go to our website, make an application, contact our office, and if you'd like to be a puppy raiser, you can fill out that information, too. So thank you.
Have to give them back.
Well, you know, but then you never have to watch them grow old, I guess. Puppy raising is truly an honor and a privilege. I am a puppy raiser. I'm doing... I've sold the program for a couple of years, now I get to actually live it. And I'm not gonna lie, we're gonna break your heart. As a puppy raiser, you bring the puppy back, and you cry, and we cry with you. And then we say, "Here, dry your eyes on this puppy." So there will always be more puppies, and we'll fill that void, and it truly is a gift of love. Many of you know Jim and Brenda Yanoshek, and several others in this community, who have made that sacrificial gift to people they don't know at all, but they raise that puppy so that it can go on to work and serve. So I'll find out in about four months just how hard it is to let this puppy go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the organizations that spoke here this evening. I really wanna hug your dog.
Yeah, me too.
Just saying. Oh, my God. Okay. Any comments by the council? All right. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And not surprisingly, that passes 5 to 0. Congratulations to all the recipients. We look forward to all the wonderful things you're doing in our community. Onto City Council business, item number 10, Consider Letter of Support for AB 3027 in response to WR cog inquiry at the request of Mayor Protem Mike Nigar. Can we get a staff report, Ms. Stewart?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This item is being brought forward at the request of Mayor Protem Nigar, and also in response to an inquiry received from the Western Riverside Council of Governments, WR cog. AB 3027 proposes to limit the award of attorney's fees to certain entities as the prevailing parties under the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as CEQA. Specifically, a homeowner, property owner, business owner, or residential or commercial tenant that is located within certain mailing radiuses, or a nonprofit organization with an active membership of 50,000 or more, formed primarily to protect the government... I'm sorry, the environment. As the subject matter is not currently covered under the city's legislative platform, it is recommended that the City Council consider approving a letter of support for the same. And that concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer questions. We do have one public speaker under this item.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, can we have our first and only speaker, please?
Our first and only speaker is Ira Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, always good to see you, sir.
Always good to still be here, Mr. Robinson. I have to apologize. It's most unfortunate that I have to follow Honey and talk about a project that's not nearly as appealing as that. I'd like to take Honey home. My name's Ira Robinson. I live in Temecula. And I'm looking at this item, which is a request to limit the ability of the prevailing party to recover his attorney's fees in an action under CEQA. Since CEQA is a law that was passed in order to protect the public, and it has a high public policy impetus that allows the Congress, or in this case, the state legislature, to say, if in the process of protecting the public, you sue, and you win, you get your council fees. Just like the rest of the world, if you sue and you lose, you simply go home without your council fees. This legislation proposes to say, you can only get your council fees if you are directly associated with a project, or if you are a member of an organization, or an organization, of 50,000 or more members. What this is intended to do is to keep people from challenging the protection of the environment. I encourage you to please vote against and not support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No more comments. Do we have anything else from the council?
Well, I'll just respond a bit, just because I put it on the agenda. CEQA started out as a very good law, and frankly, in many ways, it still is a good law, except like any law, it gets abused. And what happens is, it's used by many attorneys right now, and many people who want to stop development and housing, to hold up that development and housing. And because the way the law is written today, people who are doing the suing have really, quote-unquote, "no skin in the game." They get to play for free. So when they end up suing, if they win, certainly under this legislation, they get attorney's fees. If they lose, they walk away, but the person or the defendant in the case ends up having to pay all of their legal fees, and really just goes back to go and starts over. So there's a housing shortage right now. It's palpable. The law's being abused. What this legislation will do is discourage those from filing frivolous CEQA lawsuits, of which there are many. I hope it passes. I don't have high expectations that it will, because every bit of CEQA legislation that goes up to our state legislature keeps getting turned down. But if it doesn't stop, this housing shortage is going to be exacerbated, only because it's costing land developers hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop their projects. After they get through the process in two or three years, then they end up being sued. Sometimes it's meritless lawsuits. In many ways, the law can be... The CEQA law can be very vague, subject to a lot of interpretation, and the losses are great, and it's making a lot of developers not want to engage in the process anymore. So I just wanted to respond to Mr. Robinson, and I would still encourage my colleagues to support it.
All right. Mr. Comatara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Something, Mike, you probably don't know, or I don't think you know, but this was brought to the legislature's attention by a wonderful gentleman who lives in San Diego, who came to this country very legally, from Mexico. And he's a very successful provider of investments, many of them in the real estate development industry. And his family was in real estate development in Mexico. And he was... He and his family were abused so terribly by attorneys and others who just did nothing but search for places where they could file lawsuits. Ultimately, either, you know, they were frivolous, and they had no business in the court, but they would settle, because they're very savvy people, and they know that if they file a lawsuit, it's going to cost XYZ landowner, developer, $100,000 to fight it, and if they give the attorney who filed the case $50,000, he'll go away and smile. And that's exactly what's happening in this country. And so this gentleman fled Mexico, came legally to the U.S., became a U.S. citizen, is very successful today. And he very unabashedly will tell you, the reason he left Mexico was the very thing that's going on today, under the guise of CEQA. I agree with Mr. Nigar, CEQA is a good law, designed to protect the environment, but there's tremendous abuse, and it's adding to the cost of housing, and it's just plain criminal. And this is an effort to stop it, and nothing else. It's not an effort to dilute CEQA in any way.
Okay. Move the item. Second. Any other comments? No. Seeing none. Let's go ahead and cast your votes. Okay. Motion passes. We will go ahead and provide that letter. Moving on, Commission reports. Mr. Sullivan, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Our commission will be meeting this Thursday at 6 o'clock in these chambers. We'll be going over a review of new data that was obtained by a public meeting with staff regarding the Pina Colada... Calle Pina Colada Traffic Calming Program. We'll also be reviewing the proposal for the crosswalk for Great Oak at Deer Hollow that was referred from the council. So Thursday, 6 o'clock, and you're also welcome from the HOA to come and talk to us as well there. Thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Nigar.
Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Thomas, I sent over some photos of some examples of possible ways of other alternatives. I just want to encourage the commission to just look at many different ways, even just think out of the box on how we can solve that issue, okay?
Will do.
Thanks.
All right. Mr. Yeomans.
Mr. Mayor, at our last meeting, we had a pretty full agenda, but the one project we did approve was the hotel over on Fourth Street on that lot, and it was really a nice project. The cooperation between the applicant and the city was outstanding, and I really welcome all of you to look at, and I'm sure the staff can provide to you, what was submitted originally, and what the final product came out. It was quite a project, so it was a nice project. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Schwank, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick items for you tonight. We just had our 10th Annual Special Games, and I'm gonna sort of make a tradition of this, and make a little video, so I'd like to go ahead and show that right now. Welcome, everybody, to the 10th Annual Temecula Special Games. Ready, Jacob? Go, Jacob! Go, Jacob! Go, Jacob! As you can see, it's a great day here in Temecula for families. It's just an awesome time to be living here. I'm so proud of our city, and all the staff and volunteers, and everyone that made today possible. Thank you. Every year, that's just a really special event for the community, and I'm proud to be a part of that, and to be able to go there and to see the smiles, and the families, and just everyone that just thoroughly enjoyed... and just everyone that just thoroughly enjoys that. I think it really speaks to who we are as a city, and I appreciate that. And then, next up, we had Broadway in the Park, first-ever Broadway in the Park. We did this at Harveston in the Ampli Theater. I would say there's probably a couple hundred people that came out. We heard songs from Dear Evan Hansen, Hamilton, a couple other musicals. It was a really, really fun time, just something to thinking outside the box, thinking about different spaces and how we use those spaces. It was the first of many, I hope, to see down the road, so it was a great time. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. All right. Public Safety Report. Chief McConnell, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council and city staff. I have my March stats. It should appear on the board. So, for the month of March, we had 6,890 total calls for service, and out of that, 1,530 were traffic citations, 60 were parking tickets, 186 were traffic accidents, 109 were DUI investigations, 84 commercial enforcement citations, 51 calls for panhandling or loitering, and 18 outreach files, which was our resource day with the homeless. And as you know, April is the Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so we actually have a video for you to watch.
Hi, I'm Detective Rachel Frost with the Temecula Police Department. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and as a result, we wanted to share with our citizens some of the resources that are available to you should you become a sexual assault Here in the Temecula Valley, we are very lucky to have the Southwest Family Justice Center, which is located near Winchester Road and Technology. Here at the Family Justice Center, we have victims of domestic violence, restraining order violations, stalking, and more, who can show up to receive confidential services and assistance without the pressure of having to make a police report. Now, here at the Temecula Police Department, we would like you to be able to trust us and work with us so we can help you with whatever situation you're having. But if you're not ready to speak to the police yet, we encourage you to visit a Family Justice Center so that you can get help and you can remain safe. Since 2012, due to the nonprofit Circle of Safety, victims of sexual assault have been afforded the opportunity to obtain forensic exams at the Rancho Springs Medical Center. Victims of sexual assault can obtain forensic exams without having to make a police report. It is very important, many times after a sexual assault occurs, to obtain forensic evidence as soon as possible. But we also understand that it is very difficult sometimes to come forward and speak to the police at this time. Sometimes victims are still very afraid or don't understand what's happened to them. And as they are processing through this, we want them to afford the opportunity to obtain evidence as soon as possible. So you may come to the Rancho Springs Medical Center, present at the emergency room, and let them know you need a forensic exam for sexual assault. Victims of sexual assault will then be taken to a special room where you will meet with a forensic nurse who specializes in sexual assault exams. She will also obtain an advocate for you, either from Rape Crisis, from the Center Against Sexual Abuse, or another location. It's very important at this point that our victims of sexual assault receive services and understand that they are supported here in the Temecula Valley. Last year, in July of 2017, we added the resource of forensic exams for those who have been a victim of strangulation. This is a huge advent to our public safety ability to not only gather evidence, but also to assist in the prosecution of those who would harm others through non-fatal strangulation. There are many resources available to victims of sexual assault here in the Temecula Valley, including Rape Crisis and Center Against Sexual Assault. These are two advocacy agencies, as well as many others, such as Safe Alternatives for Everyone, who assist those who've been victims of domestic violence and their families. Here at the Temecula Police Department, we encourage you to call us if you have been the victim of any crime. But if you've been the victim of domestic violence, sexual assault, strangulation, or if you've had your restraining order violated, we encourage you to call us and report what's happened to you as a victim. But if you're not ready to report, we definitely want you to be able to access services. If you're unaware of which services, or you're unsure which one might be best for you, please visit our website at the City of Temecula for the Temecula Police Department, or you may call us at 951-696-3000. We're ready to help you at the Temecula Police Department, because most importantly, we want you to be safe.
And that was Investigator Rachel Frost, who truly is an asset to our department. Prior to 2012, if we had a sexual assault and they needed to have that SART exam conducted, we had to take them to Moreno Valley. So, the fact that we can now go to Rancho Springs helps tremendously, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Are we able to have that video on our website as well?
Absolutely.
All right. That'd be great. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see. City manager's report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing tonight. City attorney?
No report tonight.
All right. Well, I guess that's it for us this evening. Thank you all for joining us, and we'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. And any opposition to that? All right. We'll see you here next time.